All right, the time is 7:02. I am going to call to order the regular meeting of the Lansing City Council for May 12, 2025. Clerk Swoop, could you do the roll, please?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pellevanaglu.
Present.
Councilmember Spadafor. There are six members present in quorum. Councilmembers Jackson and Spadafor are absent, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Do we have anyone tonight that would like to remember someone? Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, I ask that folks remember the family of Johnny Jones, who was a longtime employee with Lansing School District, some forty-plus years, just an incredible, incredible man, gentleman, patient man, but served as a mentor, I think, to probably thousands and thousands and thousands of young people coming up through the Lansing School District. Also incredibly successful coach across a number of sports, but I think most known for some of the work he did with Ever High School, boys and girls basketball teams. But again, I know, I didn't know Johnny Jones as well as some others, but I do know a number of folks even in my friend group that were incredibly impacted by him and took that loss incredibly hard. So his wife Betty and the rest of his family, and then of course, all of those folks that he served as a mentor to, if we could keep them in our throes of prayers tonight, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none, can we please rise?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your consideration the over 100-page proceedings for May 5.
Okay, Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. With that, I would make a motion to approve the May 5 meeting minutes as written.
Okay, we've got a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes.
We are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Okay, do we have any comments by city councilmembers? Councilmember Hussein.
Yep, so first, the Luton Rich Neighborhood Association will be meeting this Thursday, May 15th, that's at 2901 West Mount Hope at 7:00 PM. So folks, if you are in that neighborhood or even adjacent to, I know they would love to see out for informational purposes, networking purposes and the like. Also on Saturday, May 17th, the Churchill Downs Community Association will be holding their annual yard sale, and that starts at actually 9:00 AM. And I know last year they had dozens of yard sales, and so, you know, we hope it grows this year, and we certainly hope that folks are out and about and patronizing those yard sales. And then lastly, the Churchill Downs Community Association's meeting for this month is actually scheduled the following Tuesday, which I believe is May 20th, and I do believe the guest speaker at that meeting will be Mayor Andy Shore. And so if you're interested in attending and participating in that conversation, again, that is May 20th, 6:30 PM, at the El Frieda Schmidt South Side Community Center at 5825 Wise Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments from any councilmembers? No takers?
And none from me, so we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details of your event.
The Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries is hosting its 18th annual geranium giveaway this Saturday, May 17th, from 10:00 to 2:00, outside of the cemetery courtesy office directly opposite Mount Hope Cemetery at 1709 East Mount Hope Avenue. We'll have 100 free seed geraniums, and the family may have up to four per family, and they're to be planted in Evergreen or Mount Hope or North Cemeteries on your loved ones' grave sites. And we appreciate all those people who have become members, made donations, or have otherwise supported our group to enable us to do this service project. Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events?
Hello? A number of nonprofit organizations, including the Michigan Waterway Stewards, Rent Is Too Damn High, Punks With Lunch, and the Tenant Resource Center are coming together to clean up the Riverway over by Dietrich Park along the River Trail. There was a homeless camp that was evacuated there, and there's still a whole lot of garbage there, so would invite anyone who wants to participate to help us out.
Thank you. Any other community events? All right, seeing none, then, we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters tonight only includes re-adopting the codified ordinances and the two items on the consent agenda. We'll give you another minute to sign in if you wish to speak during that portion of the meeting. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few announcements. One, I'm excited to let, oh, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I am excited to let folks know that we had five new LPD officers start today. I know that that's been a question that is ongoing, and we have five added, which is great. I would like to congratulate Sherri Jones, who had her last day as anchor at WLNS. We presented her with the key to the city, and that was a sad day, but a really good day for her and her family. I want to thank everybody who came out as we planted a tree for Jody Ackerman at Foster, so there's a tree and a bench in memory of Jody, who, I see Thurston Walters out there, I know you're on the Parks Board, and I think several of our members have been on the Parks Board and have worked with Jody. Congratulations to the Lansing Common, who won their first game seven to nothing, positive. Thank you to everyone who was part of Adopt a River and the Board of Water and Light. We had a lot of folks out there cleaning up our rivers. Thank you to the Board of Water and Light. We have a whole lot of stuff coming up. We have an event for Reading is Fundamental, which turns 50, coming up this week. Joeloff is opening downtown, so another restaurant this week, which is great. On Wednesday, Jolly Road will have a construction project, and there will be a meeting, the Public Service Department will have a meeting about the Jolly Road construction project, which is going to be at Tri-County from 4:30 to 6:30 to talk about Jolly Road, so Councilman Garza, I believe that's in your area, it's down by Penn. So we want to make sure that constituents know about that. And then Saturday, if you don't know it, Saturday is 517 Day, and there's a boatload of stuff going on in Lansing. If you can't find something to do in Lansing on Friday, on Saturday, you are not trying. There's going to be a cleanup at Randy Park, there's going to be a mobile food distribution, there's going to be a 517 Garden Day and Cleanup Project, there's going to be a Lids for Kids Bike Helmet Giveaway and Bike Safety Event, CACS has their Head Start 60th Anniversary, we're planting a tree for Senator Stabenow in Stabenow Park, people will be rappelling down the Boji Tower to raise money for the Women's Center, there'll be a Celebration of Life for Gail Klein, who is a longtime wonderful citizen in Lansing, the Seek Parade and Festival will be happening downtown, the Best of Lansing Downtown will be happening, Lansing Common will have a home game, and our police officers will be doing basketball with a variety of youth downtown. So no matter where you are in our city on Saturday, 517 Day, there will be plenty to do. So I hope to see everybody out and about enjoying Lansing on 517 Day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have no one who has signed in to speak on legislative matters, so we are to the referral of the public hearing. Do you still want to do an overview of that?
We can do a quick overview.
So we do have a public hearing, hearing re-adopting the codified ordinances.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, this re-adopting the codified ordinance is just a mass re-codification for ordinance that are expiring after 10 years, and so this is something that is done on an annual basis, so with that, that's the overview.
All right.
And so to the referral of the hearing.
Committee of the whole.
All right, then we are to the consent agenda.
Okay, Vice President Carter. Yeah, just item four.
It's my understanding that item five will be under resolutions for action, so that leaves item four on the consent agenda.
This is consent. It's just consent. You're good.
Yes, so I will make a motion for the item number four, the tribute and recognition of Kimberly Milton Mackey.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Item five has been moved to an action item, so if there is no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay, then we are to resolutions for action. Item five, council rules to amend Rule 48.
All right, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you for this. Councilman Cost, we have council rules amendment Rule 48, electronic participation in public comment at meetings of council committees, per council rule 41, motion may be considered for adoption of this in this meeting, and moving the participation from four hours to 30 minutes.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Do we have any discussion on this? Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank leadership for taking a look at this. We had promised when we first explored this, and then when we initially implemented this, that we would review, and obviously in earnest with the city clerk, and make a determination if we could actually decrease that amount of time prior to committee of the whole and city council that you actually had to register, so that folks could do it in a more timely manner. Also want to, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't thank the People's Council, led by, at that time, I think, Michael Lynn, Erica Lynn, and some of their advocacy to actually bring this to fruition. But again, promises may have to be promises kept, and so I certainly appreciate leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, and I very much appreciate that this was brought back up because we did have concerns about doing four hours time period before a meeting and thought we could do it sooner, and the agreement had ended up shaking out that we would revisit that. And as folks know, sometimes it doesn't always happen that we revisit things, and it did happen in this instance, and I'm very happy that we did look at it and we were able to reduce that time down, because I think that some folks maybe have something to say, you know, a little after the four hours, and this shorter time period will give someone a chance to publicly comment on an issue, so. Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, thank you. And since we are supporting everybody, too, I think that this has been something that in his absence, Councilman Jackson has been advocating for from the beginning, once we first went forward, he brought that up, so we got to give him for planting the seed to get it started.
He certainly did. Appreciate that. If there's no further comment, Vice President Carter. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Brown already moved it. It's been one of those days. All right, so I don't see any further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Speeding right through this one, that takes us to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. If you do wish to address city council, you are required to fill out the yellow sheet with Magdalen in the back. We'll give you another minute or two while you're, if you need to jump up and get with her to fill one of those out if you wish to speak. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I'll make a motion that all items be considered being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by you, President Cost.
Okay, we've got a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay, we have from the city clerk, a hearing notice from the Liquor Control Commission about hearing on denied transfer location requests at 4700 Pleasant Grove and 1705 West Mount Hope Avenue.
Committee of the whole.
From the mayor, the reappointment of Ronald Wilson to the Board of Public Service.
City operations.
From Councilmember Garza, we have two items relative to amending Chapter 206 to clarify the most responsive and responsible bidder for construction bids.
Development and planning.
And then we have a construction bid scoring system.
Development and planning.
And from President Cost, we have the annual training requirement for cities' boards and commissions.
That'll be committee of the whole.
And communications and petitions, affidavit of disclosure, Aidan Godby, Lansing Police Department.
That'll be ethics board.
Okay, we're to motion of excused absence.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I make a motion to excuse Councilman Jackson and Councilman Spadafor.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
And we are to remarks by councilmembers.
Are there any further remarks by councilmembers in the last 15 minutes? Seeing none?
Remarks by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Good.
All right, then we are to public comment on city government-related matters. First, we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Lauren Hicks. And speakers have up to three minutes to address city council.
Okay, some of this is going to be a rehash from the committee of the whole meeting, but given the content of the testimony from the fire department and the person from the union, I think it's appropriate to reexamine these issues. We have reached a time, I believe, where it's time to restructure how we do our budget entirely. You should beginning right now memo to all the department heads, telling them that you need from them their best practices, not pie in the sky, but their best practices. How many firefighters do we need to have to meet best practice? How many police officers? How many code compliance officers, et cetera, et cetera? And then we should be funding parks and police and public service and fire at 100% of those best practice needs, staffing and equipment, before any other department gets a penny. And the other departments only get what's left and what's necessary. We cut out all the fluff and fat, all the things that are feel-good, sound-good, we don't need to be paying business owners to improve their facades, that should be out of their own pockets. We don't need to be doing chili cook-offs, we don't need to be giving away free lugnet tickets, we don't need to be given a subsidy of $85,000 to Downtown Lansing, Inc. All of that fat should be cut out on the altar of the appropriate staffing for police and fire, for their safety, for our health and safety. Do you know that on average, police and fire both are looking at doubled response times over a year ago, over 10 years ago, over five years ago? It is not uncommon at all to listen to the scanner and hear somebody saying that somebody has called back three times on a traffic accident because they're sitting in their cars for an hour, and LPD has not yet been able to show up because they're on other calls. And as part of that, we also should be looking seriously at both reserve officers and medical taxis. Both of those can cut our required costs for fully licensed police officers and paramedics versus EMTs. On medical taxis, they could be taking up to 60% of the runs that are currently occupying advanced life support and paramedic staffed ambulances, and on reserve officers, they could be doing things like the curfew enforcement that never took place, parking and traffic and other enforcement issues that are lower on the hanging fruit ladder and don't necessarily require a full-fledged officer to be out there writing a parking ticket. So we need to start now, and we need to fundamentally change how we look at and how we budget our resources. The first job of a city is to protect its people's life, property, and quality of life, and we're failing in all three fronts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lauren Hicks, followed by William Lawrence.
Honorable councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, the Lansing chapter of The Rent Is Too Damn High invites you to join us for a walking tour of the Sycamore Townhomes apartment complex and the Fallen Angels encampment on Saturday, May 24th. We are a union of tenants fighting for our rights and for safe, quality, and truly affordable housing for all in the Lansing area. We want to bring to your attention two ongoing housing crises in Lansing. Sycamore Townhomes has been cited for multiple code violations by city officials in 2023, and the city of Lansing pink-tagged 339 units and red-tagged nearly 150 more, citing them as unsafe for habitation. A federal court then appointed John Polderman as receiver for the property, but instead of bringing units back up to livable standards, he is now attempting to evict the remaining tenants as part of a $15 million renovation plan. Residents claim they received 30-day notices to vacate at the beginning of May, leaving them struggling to find a place to relocate among an already oversaturated housing market. The Fallen Angels encampment is located on private property and has served as an important community for local unhoused people for years due to its location and direct connection to social services like substance abuse counseling, mental health treatment, and the Mobile Ingham County Health Clinic. However, the city of Lansing has recently threatened code violations against the owners of the private property, pressuring them to file trespassing claims that would allow the city to destroy the encampment. We invite you to visit Fallen Angels encampment and Sycamore Townhomes to discuss potential solutions and to speak with residents and hear their stories. Your presence and engagement would be invaluable in fostering meaningful dialogue and collaboration. The event will begin at Sycamore Townhomes main office, which is located at 4590 Seaway Drive, Lansing, at 12:00 PM, and after the tour, we will proceed to the Fallen Angels encampment. To highlight the importance of community engagement and your participation in addressing these critical issues, this event will be announced in several media outlets. We have also invited your fellow colleagues on city council. If you are able to attend, please contact our communications lead, Karen McKenzie. Her information is on the papers that have been distributed to you. We look forward to the possibility of working together to create positive change in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have William Lawrence, followed by Ivan Droste.
Hi there. I'd like to speak a little more in detail about the situation at Sycamore Townhomes, the latest developments on which the council may not be aware. Last June, a city official, Raleigh Van Fossen, verified in court that appointing a receiver would, quote, "avoid displacement of hundreds of tenants." That was filed with the court in June. That fall, a receiver was appointed, and city officials celebrated and said this would allow for a resolution of the situation at the property in a way that was good for the city, good for the current and future residents. This February, the receiver said, "Actually, I'm going to evict everybody from the property" in order to engage with this rehabilitation. The city attorney then filed a motion with the court, saying, "That sounds good. We support this plan," to evict everybody. In the plan submitted by the receiver, the receiver also said that moving services would be offered to the tenants, along with $1,000 in relocation assistance. In the written order that was given to the tenants, the relocation assistance was offered, but no such offer of moving services has been made. So in short, the city has not kept its word, and the receiver is not keeping his word when it comes to the management of this property. I'd like to share one other interesting point from the court filings. The receiver recently disclosed that he has been spending $20,000 per week on security services at the Sycamore Townhomes property, $80,000 per month. And what the residents there report is that the security has been used to intimidate and harass them and create an unlivable environment, which can only be interpreted as an attempt to push them out of the place where they have a right to live. Meanwhile, as I mentioned, the supposed incentive for tenants to relocate, which was offered by the city and approved by the city, or offered by the receiver, approved by the city, is only $1,000, and only for tenants in good standing, of which there are approximately 40. So adding it all up, the city attorney has rubber-stamped a plan that spends only $40,000 on directly supporting tenants, while spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, $80,000 per month, on intimidating and harassing residents. We're spending five to ten times more on the security than we are on the direct support to tenants at that property. And as Lauren mentioned, the total cost of this redevelopment is upwards of $15 million. So what the tenants there are rightfully hoping for is more time than the 30 days they've been offered to relocate, and more money to help with a very challenging task of moving and finding a new place in this economy. Councilmembers, your voice matters in public and behind closed doors on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ivan Droste, followed by Ross Fisher.
Good evening. I'm here today to speak about the homeless encampment near Dietrich Park. The word around town is that the city's been kicking up some dust, presumably with the intent of demolishing this camp. If this were to come to pass, it would be a disaster for the people who live there, dozens of them. The camp has provided stability and community to its residents for years. Having a single location to call home has enabled folks to accumulate belongings, gain access to important services, and in some cases, hold down steady employment. Some residents are even close to securing permanent housing. An eviction would put all of this in jeopardy. The people who live in this camp have no place else to go. The local shelters are pretty much full, and if they were to start a new camp, who's to say that the city wouldn't just destroy that one, too? The truth is that if this camp is destroyed, the people living there will likely find themselves on the street, or incarcerated, or dead. To destroy this camp would send a message that the unhoused are simply not welcome here in Lansing. If you want to do something about the camp, then help the people who live there. Help them find jobs and housing. If you're worried about the trash, give them a dumpster with regular pickup. These people are our neighbors. They deserve our compassion and our support. They don't deserve to be terrorized and cast out onto the street to die. If we're going to live in a city with no rent control and no social housing, then the least the city can do is afford people the right to make a home for themselves outside. So I urge the city council to call upon the mayor and the city attorney to drop all legal action related to the Dietrich Park encampment. Leave these people alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ross Fisher, followed by Julie Vandenboem.
I want the council to know that you all have an opportunity to stand with tenants at both Sycamore Townhomes and the Fallen Angels encampment. You have the opportunity to come out on May 24th, to listen to their concerns, to see what's going on, and truly support them, and actually listen to them and push back on a lot of the actions that we're seeing happening from the mayor's office and the city attorney. We're facing a lot of threats right now, especially coming from the federal level, and we cannot afford to be displacing more tenants into this situation. So I want to emphasize that you should please come out on the 24th and listen and support tenants in the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Julie Vandenboem, followed by Darren.
Hi, everybody. There's not a lot more for me to add to what's already been said here today. I just want to remind all of you up there that these folks that are living outdoors, these unhoused neighbors of ours, are folks that have created a community, they've created a neighborhood, they watch out for each other, folks that provide services, know where to find them, and if actions are taken to move them out of that space, it's going to be very, very detrimental to their health, to their well-being, and I think it makes the city look heartless and cold. The city that I love, the city that I'm fighting for, is a place where we take care of each other, where we show empathy, we show respect, we show compassion for those who are less fortunate than us. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Darren, followed by Selke.
Hi, my name is Darren, and I'm very new to Lansing. I just moved here in January, and one of the first things that I did when I arrived was joined up with Punks With Lunch. It's honestly the best part of my week. I have noticed a fair amount of empty houses in Lansing, and as a matter of fact, roughly one in 10 houses in Lansing is vacant and unused. This makes seeing people sleeping on the sidewalk even more horrifying. I am a part of the street team with Punks With Lunch that goes to the Fallen Angels encampment every other week, and while I don't know them particularly well at this time, I mean, I've only been seeing them for a few months, I have made some observations. And they socialize together, they spend time together, they do chores together, they help each other out significantly, they always make sure that every single person there gets a lift. they always make sure that every single person there gets a lunch from us, even if somebody's not there at the moment, we're still able to make sure that there's a lunch for them. They have jobs, they have animals that they take care of. They're a whole community. They've managed to connect with a number of agencies, over a dozen, that helped them to survive and have helped members of their community to grow beyond just the camp, to find jobs, to graduate into temporary and eventually permanent housing, and to put their lives back together. This is a positive environment for them as much as could be for someone who's homeless. Oftentimes, it's assumed that homeless people can just go to a shelter. But shelters are overcrowded, and with over 2,000 people in Lansing having experienced homelessness in 2023, and roughly 20% of Lansing being below the poverty line, it is just unacceptable to deteriorate or destroy an encampment, or evict an encampment, without providing a future place for the people who live there to go. The mayor and the attorney, sorry, are pressuring our neighbors at this camp to be evicted, and we cannot simply expect them to just move and fend for themselves and find another place to go. It is their home. It provides the stability that we all need. There have been a number of countries that have significantly reduced or even eliminated homelessness, but it wasn't by cleaning out encampments. It wasn't by imprisoning people for living on the street. It was by providing them housing and resources, addressing poverty. It is actually cheaper to provide the resources and house
Thank you.
... it is to dismantle homeless camps.
Next, we have Selke, followed by Mercury Rose.
Hi. I'm going to be reading some letters from tenants from Sycamore that weren't able to make it here today, but first, I want to start by saying that the only reason that an encampment should ever be cleared is when the city provides social housing for those people. If there's no plan for where people should go, then there should be no, no sweeping of camps, and the city attorney should not be playing a role to push any kind of property owners to take action against people in an encampment that don't have somewhere to live. But about Sycamore Townhomes, the first letter is from a tenant named Jody. She's a current resident. She says, "I am a current resident in good standing, living in Sycamore Townhomes in Lansing. We received a 30-day notice on May 1st from the new owners who are seeking possession of property. We, the remaining 80 to 100 residents, 30 supposedly currently now, but we understand this, we understand we to leave, but realistically, 30 days to vacate is not a possibility. Everyone knows how bad the housing shortage situation in Lansing is right now. We've had no communication from the city, other than being pink-tagged months ago, nor the mayor, who came out without notice, and talked to a few people, but we were not all heard, and not one form of communication from the new owner, who took over last September or October. The new owner has offered us $1,000 incentive to move by May 31st, but we have to turn keys in by the 30th, which legally is not even giving us our full 30 days. First, you have people who are elderly, others with disabilities or disabled, some who work during normal daytime shifts and can't get the time off to go look for new housing. Rental properties are closed over the weekends. Furthermore, most properties, most property rental offices are not even open on the weekends, and please don't forget that kids are also in school. Secondly, people who have Section 8 vouchers can't just up and move. There's a process that must be followed per the Section 8 guidelines, such as filling out new paperwork, getting approved, then having a meeting with their caseworker to get their moving packet. Then lastly, going out to find a place in which most properties turn Section 8 away. Of course, once this is done, then you have to wait for an inspection, which is currently backlogged, and the only resources we've, we received was three properties who might take us, but these places are not any better. How do we know these won't be pink or red-tagged in the future, where we potentially have to go through this all over again? So if any resident who can't find a place will end up homeless, or if the legal processing goes forward, will end up with an eviction on their credit report for seven years, should this happen, no other properties will rent to us because of the eviction placed on our credit report? Please explain to me how this is fair in any way or makes any sense at all? And the way I see this is that the city needs to be held accountable for letting this property get to the point in the first place, but we won't hear anything about that, or the fact that previous owner or management supposedly has been embezzling renters of Section 8 money.
Thank you. Next, we have Mercury Rose, followed by Joanne Galloway.
Hi, Mercury Rose. I just want to echo, like, please go to these tours, like, please go see these places that you're making decisions about, and seconding that, like, how can we move somebody out of a place when there's no place for them to go? Like, that's just like, that's not even logical. It doesn't even make sense. And I was thinking about, like, what is the point of City Council when I was, like, preparing to address you all, and like, the first thing that comes up in your mission is to promote a vibrant, safe, healthy, and inclusive community that provides opportunity for personal economic growth for residents, businesses, and visitors. And I think we, like, use this language, like, we could talk about people who, like, are tenants, right? Or like, we talk about, like, these are our neighbors at these camps, right? Like, I share a city with these folks, so I think of them as my neighbors, and I wonder if you do too. And I wonder if you can, like, extend yourself to imagine what it's like. They've gotten to a point where an encampment is the best option that you have, and so that's where you're staying, and now folks are coming in and threatening to sweep it. And we say sweep, and that sounds like, oh, like, I sweep my kitchen, like, that's fine, right? But what we're actually talking about is, like, arresting and forcibly removing people from the place that they've called home potentially for years, and then coming in with bulldozers and moving all of their stuff into the garbage. Like, if I think about somebody coming into my house and moving all my stuff with a bulldozer, and I don't have anywhere to go, like, that's heartbreaking. I don't really have anything to add, anything else that people are, like, sharing with you tonight, but I just, like, like, let's connect with our humanity, right? Like, you're here to be public servants, and that means, like, you're here to serve your neighbors. So like, let's think about the choices that we're making, and are those choices going to put people in a place where they're able to have growth, where they're going to feel included and safe? Are they going to feel like their community is vibrant and welcoming if we're bulldozing the place that they call home and not offering them a secure place to go? Because no, the shelters are not an option. If they were, they'd be there. Like, these are humans who have, like, brains that work, so if they could, like, go be somewhere that was indoors and had, like, more access to things, do you think they'd choose that? So their best option right now is an encampment, their best option are these places that are red-tagged. Like, I think I'd want to go live somewhere that would, like, meet the criteria to not have a red tag on it, wouldn't you? So this is their best option? And we can't take that away unless we have something better to give. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joanne Galloway, followed by Nicolai Trudeau.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Galloway. I'm a five-year Lansing resident, live at 3100 Mount Hope Avenue. Mayor Shore, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Cost, Commissioner Hussain, Commissioner Garza, and Commissioner, I wrote this down, Paula Vonaglu. Excellent. Thank you so much for the attention that you've given to the speakers tonight during public comment. I am very proud to have connected with some really important community organizations, The Rent Is Too Darn High, and the Mid-Michigan Tenant Resource Center. They're a huge asset to the residents of this community, and I am proud to stand with them and be a part of their work. I moved to the city, like I mentioned, five years ago. I want to be proud of my home here in Lansing. When I moved here from the Upper Peninsula, the unhoused neighbors that I saw was kind of a new experience for me, and it was, I was very curious about the situation and what brings people to be in a unhoused situation. I've learned a lot about that over time. I've also learned, I was here at the meeting when people from our trans community spoke about how they're not always welcome in the shelters that we have here, that all of our shelters are currently religious-based shelters, and I also understand that people need somewhere to be 24 hours a day. Can you imagine if every day you were forced to go out of your home and the comforts that you had created to find a place to be till you were welcome to come back in the evening in time to go to bed? I mean, that's not how I operate around my home, and I doubt that's how any of you operate. I think it's just really important that we show empathy for our neighbors, and I think it's important that each of you take up the invitation to come and visit these facilities on the 24th. You know, the people that live in the encampment, many of them have lived there three, three years. There's 30 of them there, many of them work but can't afford other housing, some of them are disabled. The encampments provide for them a community, a place where people know that they can find them, provide services for them, they can lean on each other, they, they eat community meals. And so until we have a better plan, until we have a task force here in this city that is regularly working on providing a solution, I think that we need to do what we can to support the encampments where they're at, and I would demand that the Office of the Mayor and the City Attorney drop all legal action related to the Fallen Angels encampment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nicolai Trudeau, followed by Katie Hammond.
Hello. I would like to first speak on Sycamore Townhomes, where I think that it's unacceptable to make the agreement that the receiver's plan that displaces these people is the best that they could possibly do, to accept that there is no possible way for the residents to remain housed in their units while other units are renovated, perhaps to move those residents into the completed units when they're ready. I think that there are often times when we hear a lot of nice words about what can be done and what the city supports, when all of the eyes and ears are first on an issue, and to now, down the line, have none of those promises be kept about the displacement of residents is very upsetting. And I would also like to speak on the value of stability to our community, especially as it relates to housing. I think that it is a positive good to allow children to have the routines that they've become accustomed to with where and how they get to school. I think it's positive to allow people to form connections with their neighbors over time. I think that stability is the most important factor to safety in our communities, so that people don't have to make impossible choices about where to go and how to get the resources that they need to survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Katie Hammond, followed by Kyle Richard.
Good evening, Council President, Council Members, and Mayor Shore. My name is Katie Hammond. I've been a resident of Lansing since 2018, and I am here with The Rent Is Too Darn High for, for two reasons. City Council should call for the Office of the Mayor and the City Attorney to drop all legal action related to the Fallen Angels encampment, and two, City Council should call for the Office of the Mayor and the City Attorney to hold the receiver, John Polderman, accountable for the deplorable treatment of Sycamore Townhome residents. I don't know if you've ever moved before, but it's really stressful, and that's voluntary most of the time. I can't imagine being forced from my home, where I've set everything up, I've, I've put things where I need them to be, I've made a home for myself, and you're, honestly, you're spending more money to displace people than you are to provide housing. This is a finding that's been present in research, social research across the country. We get a lot more out of providing compassion than we do for turning a blind eye to those in need. People do not simply disappear when you evict them. You make their lives quantifiably worse by doing so, and may directly contribute to incarceration or death. Please act with compassion towards some of our most vulnerable residents, and hold the Office of the Mayor and the City Attorney to account on both these matters. I hope to see you on the tour on May 24th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kyle Richard, followed by Maddie Elliott.
Good evening, Kyle Richard, Fourth Ward. I use any pronouns with respect. I'm here tonight to demand that the City Council call for the Office of the Mayor and the City Attorney to drop all legal action related to the Dietrich Park encampment, and I'm also here to demand the City Council call for the Office of the Mayor and the City Attorney to hold the receiver, John Polderman, accountable for his deplorable treatment of residents at Sycamore Townhomes. All of this, the question that came up for me, is the same question that almost always comes up for me in this body, which is, who's allowed, who's allowed to have? In this case, who, who's allowed to have a home? Who's allowed to, to stay where they are? Who's allowed to have any sense of safety when the sun goes down and it's time to go to bed? You know, are the people at Sycamore Townhomes allowed to have? Are the people in the encampment allowed to have? You know, is the City of Lansing policy that we should throw more people in the street? Because that's, that's what it looks like from the outside looking in, is that the City Lansing policy is, the encamp, those encampment folks, they're not allowed to have, they need to get in the street. The folks at Sycamore Townhomes, they're not allowed to have, they need to get in the street. And so I would echo the, the things that have been said previously about stability and empathy and compassion, and urge this body to hold this mayor and the city attorney accountable on behalf of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Maddie Elliott, followed by Sedgwick Anarak.
Hi there. I'm Maddie Elliott. I've been a resident of Lansing for about two years. I'm with The Rent Is Too Damn High, and I wanted to continue reading what Sarah had shared, a resident of Sycamore Townhomes, Jody. She left off saying, "So if any resident who can't find a place will end up homeless, or if the legal processing goes forward, we'll end up with an eviction on their credit report for seven years. Should this happen, no other properties will rent to us because of the eviction placed on our credit report. Please explain to me how this is fair in any way or how it makes sense." And the way I see this is the city needs to be held accountable for letting this property get to this point in the first place. But we won't hear anything about that, or the fact that the previous owner slash management company supposedly had been embezzling renters and Section 8 money and renting out illegally to people and so much more. "We voted you all in, and this is how we get treated. No one helps or listens, and the good people living here are the ones who suffer. Everyone in this facility has their own story, but regardless, in the end, we all need help in some way. You all need to do a much better job." And then I have another testimony from folks, from someone at Sycamore, who is a tenant. "30 days is too short notice for us. They need to give us 90 days to find somewhere new right now and still give us the $1,000 for moving. We need it for the deposit and first month's rent. For 29 to 30 years, my rent has been paid on my part. We are treated worse than dogs. Why? The landlord who did us wrong should lose his license and never get them back. More landlords should accept Section 8. These senior places are too expensive for us seniors. We need one, two, three, four-bedroom places for low-income people. The city should buy up some of these places and rent them for us, and at a price that we can afford." I also wanted to mention on the point of Sycamore Townhomes, the 30-day notice is too short, the residents were offered the $1,000, but they can't get that $1,000 until after they move out. How are they supposed to afford? A lot of these people are on Section 8, like, how are they supposed to afford three times the rent? Many residents that I've spoken with just can't find anything. They've been scrambling, looking at all of these apartment complexes across the city, can't find anything for them. These are families, these are people with young children, these are elderly and disabled people. How are we going to support them in moving and, and... How are we going to support them in moving and support their dignity? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sedgwick Anarok, followed by Luna Brown.
My name is Sedgwick Anarok. I live here in Lansing. I've been here since August of 2020, and I implore you to come take a visit. I know that my friends here have said a lot about coming out, and I just want you to think about a few things. You know, a lot of the population is living paycheck to paycheck. Houselessness is like a real threat, and 28% of people that experience houselessness are families. It could be your family, and the shelters are full. Do you know where your family would go if you had to pack up, leave next day? You wouldn't find a place in a shelter right away, so you might find yourself at somewhere like Dietrich. You know, I experienced houselessness earlier in my life, and if it weren't for other people who also are experiencing houselessness, I wouldn't have made it. And so, please, I urge you to not kick people out from the place where they can sleep at night, where they have community to at least figure out how they can navigate the world together. These are our neighbors. We should care about them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Luna Brown, followed by Mike Gorishak.
I'd just like to echo what everyone else has been saying tonight, and again, invite you out to visit the camp and to visit Sycamore Town Homes. I know myself, I've barely kind of escaped being unhoused myself multiple times, and I just can't imagine being in that situation. I would not feel safe going to the shelters in the city. I would probably end up in a camp or something, because there's no way I could meet the rent anywhere around here, especially with these three times the income requirements and different apartments. People who are disabled, which many of the people in these homes are, there's really no way for them to find a home outside of Section 8, and that is a very small window that not everyone has access to. So, like, definitely give these people more time and give them more resources to be able to find a home elsewhere, so they don't end up in the Dietrich Park camp like so many others. Thanks.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Mike Gorishak.
I'm Mike Gorishak. I've been active in the homeless community in Lansing for the past two years. I volunteer every weekend to go out to various encampments around the city to make sure that folks have Narcan, various other harm reduction type of supplies, that they have blankets and food. And over that time, over the last two years, I've been visiting the camp at Fallen Angels. And I've seen some incredible things. I, please, come out, let us show you some, and tell you about some of the amazing things these folks have accomplished. I honestly can't believe it. I'm in awe of these folks. So, when camps are removed without providing another viable place for folks to reside, it just makes things worse for everyone. The unhoused move to another place in the city, and then they're moved again, the same cycle, as I understand, for decades. There hasn't ever been a place in Lansing for these folks. We should have a place for folks to reside when they have access, where they have access to basic services like garbage pickup, toilets and showers, someplace where they can build, where we can build a community, to provide mutual aid and social services can be provided. When folks are all over the place, it's so hard, it's so hard to find them, and if they ever have a moment, a moment where they realize they can improve, if they're out in the middle of a park all by themselves, how are they going to manifest that? As opposed to if they're in a community where they have folks visiting them irregularly? Shelters provide a community, some solace for some, but there've been hundreds of folks in Lansing for decades that aren't served by those places. You might have, a lot of these folks have things that are unique about them, where a really close-quarters facility, they can't inhabit that, they'll just get kicked out. But that same person, if you put them with some space where they have some autonomy, they can exist and thrive. So, this place has been a place for them, for us to do that as a community for years. We've established a community there. I feel like I'm part of the community there. I've seen folks staying there eventually get access to services and move into housing. I've seen them acquire employment and save to improve their situation. I've seen them offer each other mutual aid.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That was our final speaker.
No further business. We are adjourned at 7:58.